The school board for the district, School District of Amory in order and welcome you all here. We're going to start out with open session consent agenda items. Who had that?
I don't, I think it's just the agenda and the minutes from our last meeting.
Yeah, but agenda and minutes and the agenda is to be approved, but minutes we're still working on since we had half the time we usually have. So just the agenda.
So it's just tonight's agenda?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda?
All right, in the second?
Second.
Jar, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. And now we'll move to our community comments section. I like to read that. "We're glad that you're interested in the School District of Amory for your educational issues. Your input may be very beneficial to the development of appropriate educational programs. You may address the board during the community comments time on the agenda. Amory School District residents and district employees may address the board at the discretion of the presiding board member. In order for the meeting to flow smoothly, we would appreciate that the following guidelines be followed by anyone wishing to address the Board of Education. Please limit comments or suggestions to five minutes or less. Comments and suggestions related to the school district operation are welcome. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the school district is out of order. Please stand to be recognized and after being recognized, please give your name and address for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you within the next week. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future board meeting." First one up is Scott Carnine. Yeah, please come up to the microphone.
Hi, this is the first time I've ever been here, so I don't know all the rules or whatever, but I got like five minutes. I'm 220 South Street West Deer Park, Wisconsin, and my daughter's going to the elementary school. And I have some concerns about, I've heard some ideas that you guys are buying books that kind of make the homosexual agenda look more appealing to the young children. And that concerns me a lot, being that people that follow that agenda and that lifestyle die 20 to 30 years younger than they normally would have. And I don't want my daughter desensitized to think that it's just okay to go do something that's going to cause her to die 20 to 30 years early. And not only my kids, but other kids too. That's one of my concerns. And also, I think it's too young for elementary students to have to deal with these issues. I think these issues should be dealt with when kids can just think for themselves when they get to be, you know, maybe in high school or something. And when you do, if you do address it in high school, I think it would be better if you just gave a full disclosure of the dangers of such lifestyle. If so, if you just tell people it's okay and people can be like that, that's fine. But it's not fine if you're not going to disclose the dangers relating to that. When you buy a pack of cigarettes, what does it say on there? It says, "The Surgeon General says this is hazardous to your health." Where's your disclosures? I want to see the disclosures and I want that to go to the students in high school if you do address these issues. The critical race theory, I don't really think that pertains to our community. I've never seen black people discriminated against here. I don't know why that has to be pushed. I think it's actually discriminating against white people, trying to make them feel bad. And I don't want my little daughter thinking she's bad because she's got a white skin. That's racist. So I would just assume that was canceled and taken out of our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joseph Veerkan.
I wanted to discuss and I was just hoping, well, first of all, I want to thank you for not letting us be Somerset. I think that's a big win for us and providing us with a plan so that we can see it and especially with, you know, I was looking at some of the verbiage and the opportunity at Normal C that we want to get back to. Thank you for that. The other aspect here that I wanted to speak about is hopefully the revisiting of some of the curriculum. And I want to read an excerpt from Dear Martin. And I'll start it off where Justice is already pulled out of a car attempting to help a friend of his who's extremely intoxicated, placing her in the backseat of the car so that she wouldn't drive impaired. And this is where the cop already pulls him out. "Handcuffs, it hits him. Melo's drunk beyond belief in the backseat of a car she fully intended to drive, yet Jess is the one in handcuffs. The cop shoves him to the ground beside the police cruiser as he asks if Justice understands his rights. Justice doesn't remember hearing any rights, but his ears had been ringing from the two blows to the head, so maybe he missed them. He swallows more blood. 'Officer, this is a big misunderstanding,' he starts to say, but he doesn't get finished because the officer hits him in the face. 'Don't you say S-H-I-T to me, you son of a B-I-T-C-H. I knew your punk A-S-S was up to no good when I saw you walking down the road with that GD hood on. So the hood was a bad idea, earbuds too, probably wouldn't have noticed he was being trailered without them. But Officer, I- 'Keep your mouth shut,' the cop squats to get right in Justice's face. 'I know you're kind. Punks like you wander the streets of nice neighborhoods searching for prey. Just couldn't resist a pretty white girl who locked her keys in her car, could ya? Except this doesn't make sense. If Mel had locked her keys in the car, Jess wouldn't have been able to get her inside, would he? Justice finds the officer's nameplate, Castillo. It reads, though the guy looks regular, like a regular white dude. Mel told him how to handle this type of situation. Though he must admit, he never expected to actually need the advice. Be respectful. Keep your anger in check. Make sure the police can see your hands, though it's impossible right now. Officer Castillo, mean you no disrespect, I told your punk A-S-S to shut the F-U-C-K Do I need to go further?
Please not. I'm not even sure what the point is. I don't think we, I mean, I'd like for you to explain the point, but I don't think we need this kind of language being spelled out.
Dr. Martin was on your curriculum for our students. Oh, sorry. And it's Dear Martin, sorry.
Dear Martin?
Correct. The other one I took the time to read was All American Boys. And it really goes over the racial divide, social injustices, talks about white privilege, and again, police brutality. The New York Times bestselling novel, Two Teens, One Black, One White, grappling with repercussions of a single violent act that leaves their school, their community, and ultimately their country bitterly divided by racial tension. A bag of chips, that's all 16-year-old Rashad was looking for at the corner bodega. What he finds instead is a fist-happy cop, Paul Galuso, who mistakes Rashad's, for a shoplifter, mistakes Rashad's pleadings that he stole nothing for belligerence, makes, mistakes Rashad's resistance to leave the bodega as resisting arrest, mistakes Rashad's, Rashad's every flinch at every punch the cop throws as further resistance refusal to stay still as ordered. But how can you stay still when someone is pounding your face in the pavement? So I did some research on the authors. Just some of the things, and again, that I wanted to address were many of the things that were brought up here and many of the things that you're already thinking. One of the authors stated that it's bringing up conversations around white privilege, racial profiling, fear and discrimination, racism, poverty. He made the, and I will quote this, "The problem is about white people not talking about white people about whiteness enough. I will not tolerate racism. And as a law enforcement officer of 20 years, I've put days in our schools to earn the trust and respect of our students and staff. And I'm not okay with what happened to George Floyd. But this anti-police sentiment has to stop somewhere. There has to be a rational area where, yes, there does have to be conversation. But again, this is, this is overboard. Would you please review some of the books that we're going to be providing our children? And maybe if they're going to get them, I would be happy, I read this book, I would be happy to go over it with the teacher, to see how it's going to be portrayed to our I want to also say I did do some research and found that the author, Jason Reynolds, during an interview, had to address that this wasn't about, all about police brutality. And he said that all cops are not bad cops. But I think if you're watching the media lately, and then if we're going to throw these books at our children, I think they're going to think one thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And now we have Stella Johnston and her dad.
Hello, my name's Kevin Johnston, and we asked our daughter if she'd like to speak, and we let her say whatever she wanted to say. We didn't help her except for spelling, so we gave her a little hand with it, other than spelling. This is what she wanted to say today, so I'm here for support to-
Bring the mic down for her, would you?
All right, honey, here. There you go.
I appreciated my experience at the Amory District until 2020, and when it all went down. Masks are unneeded for students and should be removed. Forcing to wear a mask makes my breathing slow down, and it makes me feel sick. I can't see my friends smiled, and I would miss that. For me, being quarantined was hard because school became lonely, and staring at a screen made my vision blurry. Please take masks off. What does that say?
Next time.
Next time we have school.
So I just noticed last meeting we had, there was comments that kids had no problems wearing masks. And as a parent, I know we're hearing it at home. So I just want to make sure you do understand there is kids that are having problems. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And Julie Veerkan.
Good evening, Julie Veerkan, Blackbrook Township. Thank you again for being here tonight. I'm here asking you guys to please vote to remove the mask policy from our handbook. Right now, you guys have put the CDC and Fauci on the pedestal, and that is now crumbling with the leaking, not leaking, the, I missed, the knowledge now of his emails has been going around. If you haven't heard about them, you can go find them, but he's openly stated to constituents that the masks don't work for containing viruses. And I don't know if you know right now, but there's a Nuremberg 2.0 that's starting out in Germany. A thousand lawyers and 10,000 doctors have filed a lawsuit for violation of the Nuremberg Code for Crimes Against Humanity for the CDC, the WHO, and the Davos Group. And they are charging them with violating all 10 codes in that Nuremberg Code book. And I, last, we're here the same place we were last summer. Last summer, it was recommended to wear masks, and then a week later changed to mandating wearing masks. We need this policy removed, so at any point in time, you can't mandate the masks because of the flu season or whatever may else come up. And if you're afraid to remove the policy due to a loss of teachers being scared to teach our children, those teachers need to leave. I am sorry, but we have great teachers here who love children, who love seeing children grow and smile and learn new things. The teachers who are too scared they might get sick from children, they have options too. They can go teach virtually at an online school or online college, but if they're too scared around children, this is not the career they should be in. We all have choices, and that's also a choice we as parents don't get to choose who gets to teach our children if you guys give us teachers who are too scared. So please take, if we all focus on what's good and best for our children, things will then turn around. But if we keep putting our focus in the wrong places, nothing will be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for our community comments, so we will move to our action items. And the first one is the COVID-19 mitigation plans for the fall of 2021. Dr. Duffler.
Okay, you'll see on the screen the very same PowerPoint presentation that I'm speaking from here in front of me. The mitigation plan for the fall of 2021, and the emphasis here would be face coverings. There are a lot of other mitigation factors, of course. The first slide are the numbers for the most recent window, which trailed us up through June 8th. You'll notice there, the blue tally at the far right was 42, and the red tally is three, which would be cases within district. The 42 is cases within counties. This is the very same tracking of information that we've done since basically this time last year, and formerly tracked it online on our website on September 1st forward. So the numbers are as low as they have been and well past a year. The next slide is a summary of the cases within district, broken down by staff, student, and then a percentage at the bottom of each of those columns, and also each particular area running from Clubhouse all the way through high school. And again, other is just not a staff person that has a specific building that they're in, they're in multiple places. So these are the numbers, the full picture from September 1 through June 4th, to the best of our knowledge. The decision for summer, that was made, it has to be four, six weeks ago by now. In regards to face coverings, and we actually started Clubhouse for summer last Wednesday, and we started summer school today. Face coverings are not required for students and staff at summer school, they are optional. And parents, staff, kids have known that for a while now, so that's where we came down on summer school. The CISA, CISA 11 are the 39 schools that make up Northwest Wisconsin. The seven that we are aware of, we don't have everyone having filled out the survey that CISA 11 sent out, most did, but not all. Seven are requiring face coverings. There is a batch of 25 in the middle. Amory is in the middle of that batch, or actually first within that batch. And then lastly, I'm not here to say that these seven are or are not, we simply don't know. And in some cases, they were undecided, they hadn't yet made that decision. I imagine most everyone's going to have made that decision by now, though. That survey is about three weeks old now, because everyone's starting summer school right now. So this is what it looks like within this part of the state. The summer school guidance, the summer Clubhouse Childcare Guidance, sorry. As of Monday, June 7th, face coverings became optional for all students and staff at Clubhouse Childcare. That was for non-school age kids, because school age kids did not start until the 9th. They weren't there Monday, Tuesday. The reason for that change in decision came from the Department of Children and Families. They updated their health guidance by their directive, face coverings for students who attend and those who work in Wisconsin childcare settings are now optional. So we followed that direct, that in essence, guidance and allowed us to make that decision on our own, and we followed suit with Clubhouse, so they're optional there as well. The policy for face coverings, this is from July of 2020. I'm not going to read every word there for you. For those who have a hard copy, you certainly can do so. The portion that has been highlighted was highlighted by me in the policy itself. It isn't highlighted, I simply wanted to make mention. Where we presently sit is that if there is a county or a state order, there certainly could be face coverings, though there is litigation going on about that right now, or as directed by district administration and/or the Board of Education. District Administration and Board of Education could make that decision about the summer, have, and they could also make the very same decision about the fall. And what I mean by that is you could decide to keep things as is and follow a policy and wear masks. You could decide to take a big Sharpie and put an X through the policy and say there is no policy anymore. Or you could go ahead and by your direction say, "We're not doing masks in the fall." You could do any of those things, or something altogether different that I didn't just mention. Recommendation for the fall of 2021, which is the next school year, face coverings would be optional for all students, staff, and visitors while on school grounds, at school transportation, and at school events. So that again is for September 1 moving forward. Face coverings requirement for the fall, there hasn't been a survey about fall that has gone out. The only district that I have knowledge of that has made the decision to have face coverings in the fall is Somerset. The other 38, maybe there are some schools that have made the decision. Most are probably doing that here in June and July. So there's a whole bunch of folks that haven't made up their mind on that yet. Recommendations for the fall, students and staff who are positive for COVID-19 would be school excluded. Students and staff who are symptomatic for COVID-19 would be school excluded. And then the School District of Amory wouldn't be doing contact tracing and quarantining of students and staff who are close contacts to someone who is positive. Basically meaning that if you're positive or you're symptomatic, you'd be on your way and everyone else would be here and not be in quarantine. So that's the recommendation for the fall. Again, you can choose to do what you want there. Recommendations for the fall, we would return to normal procedures for visitors. There are a lot of visitors, particularly at the elementary and intermediate school, though there are some at the middle and high school. Parents allowed in the buildings for drop-off, pickup, volunteer, and eating lunch with kids. Again, that's most likely for younger kids, for drop-off and for eating lunch. Outside groups would be allowed to schedule and hold activities on campus. We have had all sorts of instructional opportunities over the years with them. Recommendations for the fall for events and field trips, we would return to the typical event schedule, and student field trips would resume. If we went to a play in St. Paul at Park Square, we would go to a play in St. Paul at Park Square like we've done in the past. Recommendations for fall of 2021, many of these recommendations are sort of ongoing as they're, as in they're happening right now. The spring sports season was pushed back by WIAA, so that spring sports season is continuing. For instance, we had track regional today, and track state typically would have been last weekend, so it's ongoing. Will be wrapped up by the end of June. The School District of Amory would follow COVID-19 recommendations from WIAA. And what their recommendation basically is, in a nutshell, no one's wearing masks on the sideline, no one's wearing masks competing, no one's wearing masks in the stands as a spectator, and particularly so in that pretty much everything you do in the spring is outside. So there aren't any masks required there, they're entirely optional. Continued mitigation efforts for the fall, continued to use hand sanitizer would be available in classroom areas and common areas. Continued coaching of proper hygiene and respiratory etiquette, and frankly, even before COVID, we were seeking to do that at the elementary and intermediate. And then sanitation of classrooms and common areas would also take place. And the last slide is recommendations for the fall. If circumstances change, district administration and/or Board of Education may revisit the fall COVID-19 mitigation plan and make changes as necessary. I couldn't begin to tell you what's going to happen in September, but that's up to you how we want to proceed on that. So those are the slides of the day, and if you have questions or comments or conversation, I'll turn it over to you.
Comments?
Well, I guess one of the questions I have is, under quarantining, that students and staff who are symptomatic for COVID-19 will be school excluded. Are we talking, you know, kids that are showing symptoms of COVID-19, which can often look like allergies or a cold?
Right.
Which, I think if you have a cold, you should probably stay home too. But, you know, in the past, we've kind of been like, eh, stay home for a day or two and get back to school, you don't want to miss too much. And, you know, now we kind of have, maybe have said, oh, you can stay home a couple more days and make sure you're well before you go back. So I guess I'm just trying to determine how we would, you know, navigate that with-
I think it's probably going to be kid by kid and the conversation between parent and school nurse, as it's been for the better part of a year or more. School excluded, meaning if they're symptomatic for COVID outside of their baseline, if they're a kid with allergies, which is what we've said from the beginning, then their allergic condition would kick in when it kicks in, and that would be normal, so they wouldn't go anywhere. They would stay right here and work through their allergies. Some kids have allergies. But it's going to have to be a kid by kid. I don't think you want to say across the board, if they have this, this, and this, they got to go and they're gone for 10 days. I don't, I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah.
It's a good question, absolutely.
It's always a moving target.
Yeah. I think our recommendation and our policy has always been, if you're sick, stay home. I think that we see that that works. It's probably one of the best mitigation measures that we can take, and if you're sick, stay home. If it's outside your blast line, stay home. It's always been the policy.
And whether it's COVID or just the flu?
Right. Nobody wants any of it.
No, no.
Although, in the past, it's been a little bit trickier because you've needed to get doctor's notes or whatever if you're missing too many days, and so that has, like this last year, you weren't required to get-
Sure. Well, we just met last week actually on attendance policy, attendance secretaries, the building principals, people services, myself, and talked about what attendance policy would look like. It looks very similar to what it did in 2019. 2020, it would have been really impossible to say, you need to go home for this, this, and this, and oh, by the way, you're out of days. We just completely went lax on the attendance policy with reason, because COVID was in full swing here, particularly in the fall. So it looks very much like 2019 with additional days given to parents in an overall sense. But that's probably a topic for another day, but we'll work with families. I mean, we want them to be here, that's the best chance for success for a kid in school is for them to be here. And I think parents want them to be here too. It's a huge inconvenience to have a kid at home for your work schedule, and you know they're not getting what they need at home probably. So attendance is a topic that's on the radar. We just met last week.
Yeah, I think we need to understand that these, none of this stuff is set in stone by what we do tonight. It's always going to be changing, it's always going to be moving. If any of us would have thought in 2019 that in March of 2020, we would be shut down for the remainder of the school year, I think we would have looked at each other and said, "You're crazy." But it happened. So you have to go with the flow sometimes, so like, this is a moving target. I think we can plan, a good plan tonight, and if things change, things change.
Dale?
Well, I would look at this as a positive step. I think summer school, what, started today?
Today.
So, you know, hopefully all goes well there. If all goes well there, I would certainly see this as being the direction we're going in the fall. If we find out that, you know, half the kids or all the kids are getting sick in summer school, then it's a different conversation. But I personally don't see that happening. I think, I think we're, you know, the people that have chosen to get vaccinated probably have, students, staff, any community members, so I think we're heading in the right direction. We've done just about all we can. Our goal was to make it through the end of the school year, we did that. And now, I know a number of the people here tonight have, you know, had to maybe put up with wearing masks longer than they would have liked to. And there's a number of people that probably don't want to get rid of masks yet today, but it's, I think it's time for that side to make some adjustments in their beliefs and thoughts, and we move forward with masks being optional, certainly for the summer, and I would certainly hope so and expect so for the fall as well. So I like the plan. I like the plan moving forward, and hopefully all goes well.
That's our hope.
What is that plan? Are you indicating that we would be striking the policy, leaving the policy as is, and then the discretion of the board is to do this or that? I mean, that would really be the question at this time.
Well, I guess I would certainly, I guess at this time, I would like to see masks being optional in the summer, which they are.
Yes.
With the plan of masks being optional in the fall. And like we mentioned here, looks like parents, you know- like parents, you know, basically, it's returned to normal, I don't know.
In that regard, yeah, it would likely be.
What would be different, other than?
I think you'd see increased sanitizing, increased disinfecting.
Which are all good things.
Sure.
People should be doing-
You would see less social distancing, you wouldn't see masks, so those would be dramatic differences from 2020, but would look like 2019.
Yeah. So I think if we could look like 2019, and if we're practicing better personal hygiene, you know, having hand sanitizer out and available, to me, that's a good thing that anybody and everybody should be taking advantage of, so.
I guess, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
So I guess, looking at the face coverings policy, and I'm looking at, you know, looking at it closely here, I would say we, I would like to see the last line of the first paragraph taken out, because that kind of makes it sound like we are requiring masks, versus if we just leave the first sentence in, it says that masks will be required when, masks will be required by a county, if they're required by a county or state ordered, or as directed by district administration and/or the Board of Education. I think the rest of the policy is fine to leave in place, because it basically just says what would happen if people don't follow this directive, and what defines a face covering and defines how they could get an exemption from a face covering. But I guess I would like to see that last line in the first paragraph stricken, if we're going to keep the policy in place, which I think is fine, because, again, the first sentence just says that it'll be required if it's, if there's a county or state order, or as directed by us, which leaves it open for us to, you know, to require face masks if necessary, but again, I don't think that any of us really want to do that. I don't know if we, if it would be best if we had some kind of a matrix or a chart or something to say when that would go into an effect, so it doesn't seem so arbitrary. I guess that's my opinion on the policy.
If you were to tweak the policy, you could do the first-
Reading?
Reading of that as an action item at the earliest on the 28th, and then the second would be July 19th, so there wouldn't be any word to anybody about not having masks in the fall until at the earliest July 20th. If that's the route you want to go. In regards to a matrix, I've mocked up a matrix for the fall, but haven't done anything with it, in that the numbers have been incredibly low, and I didn't pursue it, because I didn't know that it would be something that would be necessary, so. But if that's something you want to see and work with, you certainly can.
So what if we just decided to strike this policy altogether?
Okay.
And then stuff goes off the rails, and then we, where is our option then to either bring back the policy or to rewrite the policy and then require masks again? But that would give people some feeling of, well, it's, it would not set something in stone that say, when we meet these criteria, we do this, it's, that seems like a lot of hassle.
Sure, if you want to adopt a policy, you can do that at any subsequent board meeting, June, July, August, September, October, whenever you wanted to. If you struck it tonight, you can bring it back, you can do that with any policy.
Right.
If you wanted to do that.
Right. So if we just struck it?
If you wanted to.
There would be no harm, no fault to anybody at this point, it's the plan going forward, why not just strike it?
The only, the only drawback is it's another meeting, but that's what you do, if that's what you want to do.
We're having a special meeting tonight.
This is another meeting, too.
Yeah, this is another meeting, you're right, yes.
We're having a special meeting tonight. We've had 17,000 special meetings this year, so what's one more?
If things were to go south with COVID between now and the end of summer, we'd likely have another board meeting, a special board meeting anyways, so.
And you can do that, you don't even have to do it at a regular time, you can schedule a meeting, just like you scheduled this one.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's probably the best option, and we just, we just get rid of a lot of headaches, a lot of hassles, a lot of extra work that nobody has any more time to put in. So I would be in favor of striking the policy completely at this time, so I will make a motion.
That's, that's in effect the policy slide number seven, is that what you're talking about, right?
Yes, on page four.
Page seven, yeah.
The face coverings policy. So my motion would be to strike the face coverings policy as written at this time.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion was made in second to eliminate the face coverings policy discussion. Are we going to address any of the recommendations?
I think we can do that in a minute. I think we can talk about the other recommendations.
Are you going to add that, or now you're, you're kind of wandering from eliminating it all together to now bringing some of it back?
Well, I think we're dealing with the face coverings policy in this motion, and then we can talk about the other recommendations.
There can be several motions to this.
You want to do it as separate motions?
I want to just cover this as a, as is.
So the first of your motions would be to strike the policy, the second of your motions would be to follow the recommendation that in the fall, face coverings are optional, students, staff, visitors, school grounds, transportation, and school events.
Right.
Yes?
We can put that all as one, if Becky doesn't have a problem writing up that whole complete motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be my formal, then, amended motion, is that we strike the face coverings policy as written at this time, and then follow all other recommended mitigation efforts going forward in the fall of 2021, 2022 school year.
And Erin, would you want to second that?
Yep, I will second that amended motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? None? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Closed. Next, we have the personnel action.
Personnel. Okay, since we didn't have a chance to look at this in closed session, I'll rattle it off here in open session. We have new employment contracts for Sonya Kelly as AM advisor, Gina Arndt, elementary school secretary, Carly Moaning for Clubhouse Assistant Teacher, Jean Edwards, speech and language, Matthew Brisk for science, extra C contracts, forensics, two times, Danielle Erdrich and Lindsay Myers, Jeffrey Stauner in girls, girls assistant soccer coach, Andrea Yuhas AV coordinator, resignations, bus drivers Alan Carlson and Robert Elson-Petter, DI co-advisor Shane Curtis, Carrie Grandell, special ed para, Kelly Grubie Van Driver, Mark Olman, eighth grade science, Tara Rose for high school science and varsity softball, Cameron Schaefer, middle school cross-country assistant, and lastly, Jennifer Swenson, high school special education teacher. So you would need to make a motion, whether to accept or deny those personnel items.
Or would you like to deal with them in closed session?
Yeah, well, personally, yeah. I, I guess I hate to see some of these people resign, in addition, I guess there's some new people coming on, but I think we would move to approve the personnel action.
Okay.
Second.
Second? Motion is made to approve the personnel action items. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Okay. Do we need to get it in closed session?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. We will move to closed session, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personal action pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 sub 1, sub C. Roll call, vote. Erin?
Yes.
Char?
Did we get a second on that?
I was just-
Did you move it? I'll second it.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Erin said yes, Char?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
I say yes, we're in closed.
All right, thank you.